Good evening and welcome to the Canton Planning Commission, a little bit late. We do apologize for the technical difficulties for the 3rd of May. As usual, we always like to begin with saying the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag. And for those who do not have one handy, I'm gonna put one in front of me here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Wonderful. All right, Commissioner Zuber, would you like to call, roll, and see who's here?
Would love to. Commissioner Taria? And you'll have to unmute yourself.
Yes, I'm present in Canton, Michigan, Wayne County.
Excellent. Commissioner Egenberger?
I am also present from Canton, Michigan, Wayne County.
Excellent. Commissioner Engel?
Here, Craig Engel, Canton Township, Michigan.
Okay. Commissioner Foster?
I'm here in Canton Township, Wayne County, Michigan.
Excellent. And Commissioner Ocon?
Here, Cook County, Chicago, Illinois.
Excellent. And Commissioner Singh is absent. Commissioner Weber?
Present, Canton Township, Wayne, Michigan.
Okay. Commissioner Zuber, also present in Canton Township, Wayne County, Michigan. And Chairman Green?
Present, Wayne County, Canton, Michigan. All right, awesome. And of course, we have our community planner, Mr. Sloan. And how's everybody doing tonight? Everybody okay? Are you still getting through this pandemic? All right, wonderful. Okay, so get on with the meeting here. We've got minutes from April 5th, which was the last time we held our meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Support.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Egenberger. All in favor of those, approving those minutes? Oh, I'm sorry. I almost slipped again. Commissioner Zuber, would you call the vote on approving those minutes?
I didn't even catch that. Certainly. Commissioner Taria?
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel? Commissioner Ocon?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster, sorry?
Yes.
Yeah. Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes. And Chairman Green?
That's a yes from me as well. Sounds like we have another member on the panel.
We have a cat who approves of the minutes too. I apologize.
That's okay. All right. Okay, so tonight we do have an agenda of four items. Is there anything late to add from staff?
Nothing new to add.
Nothing to add, okay. And anything that the commission wants to specifically talk about to add to the agenda? Hearing none, seeing none. Do I hear a motion to accept tonight's agenda as published?
So moved.
I'll support that.
All right, so we've got a motion by Commissioner Weber, I think it was, and support by Commissioner Zuber. Commissioner Zuber, would you call the vote, please?
Sure. Commissioner Taria?
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Ocon?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes. And Chairman Green?
Yes.
Wonderful. Okay, so our first agenda item of the night is a public hearing for the Shannon Frank Daycare, where we're considering a special land use for a group childcare for the home which already has a family designation. This property is located north of Hanford Road between Canton Center Road and Sheldon Road. Mr. Sloan, could you give us more detail?
Sure, thank you. The homeowner proposes to conduct a group childcare home in a personal residence at 7138 Foxwoods Drive. Ms. Frankie presently has a license for a family childcare home, which allows for up to six children, which is a permitted use. Any childcare use for more than six children is a special land use in our five zoning district. Group childcare homes licensed in the state of Michigan allow for up to 12 children. And the criteria for group childcare homes are established in the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. A little bit about the zoning enabling act, that it classifies family daycare homes as residential uses of property, the family daycare home being up to six children. So, for example, if someone has a single-family residence in Canton, there's no local approval for a family childcare home. They go to the state for their licensing. So, as such, we have many family childcare homes operating in the township that don't need municipal approval because of this provision in the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. However, when a childcare home goes above six kids, there is a classification that goes from a family childcare home to a group childcare home. And with a group childcare home, the classification is between seven and 12 children. In the zoning enabling act, that's classified as a special land use, which means that it has to have a public hearing. In Canton, that would mean also a recommendation by the Planning Commission and final action by the Board of Trustees. Both the family daycare home and the group daycare home classifications are classified as something that takes place within a personal residence, so there's a residential component to it. But there are elements of a group daycare home that come up that don't always come up with a family daycare home. And that's where I'll get into next, some of the criteria in the zoning enabling act. The first is the separation requirement. The zoning act requires that there be a minimum separation distance of 1,500 feet from another licensed group daycare home. And I don't know why that separation distance is set at 1,500 feet. I think it's mostly a spacing issue, especially in neighborhoods where we don't want a close collection of daycare uses in terms of traffic and other sorts of things. They, I think the intent there is to space them out. I bring that up because at 6,700 Stirbridge to the east, there is also a group daycare home that's licensed by the state for between seven and 12 children. That one is located 1,250 feet away, and that's by going alongside the road, which is how the zoning act requires us to measure. So, when we take that measurement on Google, we get about 1,250 feet. So, it is less than what is called for in the state act. The state act also includes a provision that a local unit of government may issue a special land use permit to a group childcare home that does not meet the standards of that separation. But the act does not allow any kind of standards review. So, that standard of review would have to be done locally by the municipality. Ms. Frankie is included in her letter. She has addressed the proposed uses compliance with the special land use standards of Section 27.03(c). So, absent any other standard in the zoning ordinance for group daycare homes, we would look at the general special land use standards of Section 27.03(c), which are generally, in this case, looking at the impact on the neighborhood, the distance from other group daycare home uses, parking, drop-off, pickup, things of that nature. Looking at the aerial maps, because the separation distance of 1,250 feet is pretty considerable, and there are two other streets separating Foxwoods and Stirbridge, we recommend that that distance of about 1,250 feet be approved as the separation is already there in terms of having those streets separating the use and houses. The next provision is fencing at the top of page two of our report. The zoning act requires appropriate fencing as determined by the local unit of government. In the zoning ordinance, we don't have specific provisions for group daycare homes. So, there's really nothing in the ordinance that requires a fence in terms of the standards. The only way that would be required would be as if it was a condition of special land use approval, which the Planning Commission and Board could require. One of the items that comes up here is that it's our understanding that this association, this homeowners association does not allow fences. There don't appear to be any in the association, and and that was addressed as an issue, both with some public comments that we received and in the application materials itself. So, that may be something that we discuss more in a little bit. The next standard is the visible characteristics of the neighborhood. The existing home maintains consistency with the character of the neighborhood. Allowing seven to 12 children does not appear to alter that consistency or the visibility. The next standard is the hours of operation. Ms. Frankie proposes hours of operation to be from 6:30 a.m. to 3 o'clock p.m. Monday through Friday, which is consistent with the allowable hours in the zoning act, and the dates of operation coincide with the school year. For signage, there's no signage that's proposed, but if there is, it would have to comply with the act and also the zoning ordinance. And then finally, for parking, there's a driveway at 7138 Foxwoods that has room for two cars. Also, there is on-street parking available adjacent to the home on the north side of Foxwoods. So, there is room for people to park and drop off their kids. So, based on based on the standards in the zoning act, our recommendation is for approval of the special land use at 7138 Foxwoods Drive, including an application through the separation distance from 6,700 Stirbridge to allow the current separation distance of approximately 1,250 feet. Finally, earlier today, yesterday, we received two public comments from residents in the neighborhood. One was from a Robert Garen, I hope I pronounced that right, and the other was from Steve Trainoff. And I received those via email, and I forwarded those to the planning commissioners this afternoon. So, you've received those, and I think at least one of those members is also in the audience as well. So, that concludes our report, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. This is a public hearing, so let's go ahead and open the public hearing. Do I hear a motion to do that?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Before we get into that, can I make a suggestion that in order for expedience, and so we don't get hung up in things that we really don't have the ability to discuss, I noticed in both letters opposing this use was this mention of, and Patrick touched on it, is the, that this is used against, or they feel it's against the use of their homeowners association bylaws. And I would just like to emphasize to the people that we don't, we as a board, community board, we don't have the jurisdiction to rule on that on the basis of those things. We can only rule based on what the township ordinances are, what the state law is. Any HOA bylaws are a private contract essentially between the homeowner and the homeowners association themselves. Again, I just bring that up so that I know people don't keep bringing that up and thinking that we have a way to reinforce that mechanism. I think Patrick touched on it in his review also, so. But I just wanted to make that suggestion, so again, just so we don't get hung up arguing about homeowners association bylaws and such.
Okay, well, why don't we open the public hearing? And we're gonna, you know, probably delve into that point that you're making, Commissioner Weber. So, let's open the public hearing, and we can discuss that further.
Mr. Chairman, I move to open the public hearing.
Support.
All right, we've got a motion by Commissioner Zuber to open the public hearing and support by Commissioner Foster. Commissioner Zuber, would you call the vote on that, please?
Sure. Commissioner Taria?
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Ocon?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes. And Chairman Green?
Yes. Okay, if I may, gathering from what you sent us, Patrick, in terms of those two letters, I got the feeling that we have a little bit of a misunderstanding as to what we're about on this vote tonight and this discussion. So, could you explain the difference between a zoning change application and a special land use change or a special land use application?
Yes, the public comments that we had received had spoken to the to the opinion that they were opposed to rezoning the property. And what we have is an application for a special land use, not a rezoning. The property is owned, our five single-family residential, and will be continued to be used and zoned, our five single-family residential. The application before the Planning Commission this evening is a special land use for a use that is a special land use within that R5 district. So, it is applying for a use that's available in the current zoning district that's proposed. So, the application is for a special land use, which is a group daycare home, which, as I noted previously, is within a residential use of property. You have to have the residential use of property to be eligible to apply for that use. So, it isn't for like a large daycare center where there's dozens of kids there, and it's a mostly a commercial type of use of property. This is a residential use of property. It's just a special land use on top of the principal residential use.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Is the owner representative available?
Yes, Ms. Frankie is in the audience.
And would she like to say anything?
Yes, she has her hand raised, so I will click on to allow Ms. Frankie to talk. So, Ms. Frankie, you're up if you wanna unmute yourself.
Good evening.
I'm Shannon Frankie. What, the reason I wanted to go to a group home is because I, like I was mentioned, I currently have, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I currently have up to six. And in the past, I've had maybe four families, and they have a second child, and I've had to turn that family away because having a seventh child would put me over my limit. I do know from talking with other group home providers that it kind of depends on the square footage of your home as to, you might get licensed for seven to nine, however, you still are considered a group home. So, my intention is really just to be able to keep the families I have when they have a second child, sometimes a third. So, my intention is to never go really beyond seven or eight. And I also hope by the end of the year, I have a grandchild, which would then, you know, add another to me. So, basically, that's it. I do know that we're not allowed fences. I know you brought that up earlier. I lived here for 27 years. I was one of the first homes built. I do know we can't have fences. I have a very large deck. We, you know, use my backyard. I have a 600 square foot deck, which has gates on both ends. So, that's kind of where we play. We do have a place, little plastic play structure in the back. But with the teachers, I only do Plymouth Canton teachers. So, they're basically picked up pretty much right after school, which doesn't give us a lot of time outside. You know, we'll go out maybe before lunch, but.
So, if I may ask, Ms. Frank, you don't have a fence in your yard now?
No, I don't. I never have.
Because you've observed the bylaws, okay.
Yes.
So, that concern is not a concern really that's legitimate at this point for us or anyone actually, because you're not intending on putting a fence up?
Correct.
All right. Patrick, are there any comments from the audience, any other comments, since this is a public hearing? I'd like to go ahead and hear them, like neighbors or something like that.
We have a, we have a hand raised from Robert Garen, so I will allow Mr. Garen to talk here. Mr. Garen, you're up if you wanna unmute yourself.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
Board. It is, as I stated, I'm one of the neighbors in the Foxwoods homeowners neighborhood. I have a question to the board, if you can help me with the definition, because in our understanding in our bylaws, and I'm not asking you to enforce the bylaws, our bylaws state that the no lot in the project shall be used for other than a single-family resident purpose as defined by the Township Canton zoning ordinance. So, can you please tell me if this group home, or now to my knowledge, a single-family, I apologize, I don't understand what she's, what the current licensing is for. Is that in line with the Township of Canton zoning ordinance?
Patrick, would you care to address that?
If it's in the bylaws for a single-family residential purpose, I would be the one to interpret the ordinance, and the residents would be the ones to interpret their bylaws. And so, I take it to mean that if it's a use that's otherwise allowed in a single-family residence, that, I'll start with a family daycare home, because it's something that the state act requires, or it requires us to approve and no municipal review or approval. If someone were to do a family daycare home, I would consider that the residential use of property, because it's actually stated in the zoning enabling act that a family daycare home is a residential use of property. Also, there are provisions in the zoning act that supersede local review. For example, if someone was conducting, teaching a fine art or craft like piano lessons, that's allowed in the zoning acts. In the zoning ordinance itself, the local Canton Township ordinance, we allow home occupations. So, there are several people in the community that conduct home occupations that are either office or otherwise business enterprises out of their homes that are non-residential by themselves, but inside of a home, it's an extension of that residential use. So, I think the intent there is for a group daycare home to be an extension of the residential use with the understanding that it is a special land use. So, there are provisions, and there are standards in the zoning ordinance by which they can be granted or conditions placed on them, or the township has authority to not grant permits under certain circumstances as well.
And it is a daycare as opposed to, let's say, a facility that might house children overnight, which would change the residency, right, and change the usage?
Correct. And I'll mention another use, and that is adult foster care facilities. The state zoning act allows for adult foster care facilities for up to six residents in a home. And then, for a group foster care facility, I think the number is seven to 12. So, there are some things in the state zoning act that do allow adult foster care where it is continuous 24 hours a day.
Yeah, okay. All right, Mr. Garen, does that answer that question?
So, just for clarification, you're saying, yes, it complies with the township zoning ordinance for a single-family home? For a single-family resident?
If it's found that it meets the standards for a special land use for a group daycare home, it would, because it would require a single-family residence. It would require permanent residency, and the occupant of the resident is the one who is licensed.
Because I'll just state for a minute, for a matter of my own personal opinion, that having a daycare operating next door, across the street from me, impacts the value of my home, and that's what I'm concerned about. And that, again, is what I think the bylaws are intended to make, is to maintain the value of the neighborhood as a whole. And that's my concern, so that's why I oppose this.
Mr. Garen, if I might ask you some questions, since you do live close by. Are there any detrimental effects in terms of traffic or noise or any of the things that you might be concerned with? Or is it just the name that there's a daycare that you are afraid is gonna affect the property values?
I will tell you, that road has a considerable amount of traffic on it, not only with the normal traffic through there, but you have quite a bit of traffic cutting through between Canton Center and into the adjoining neighborhoods, and then through Hanford, so they can avoid the light at Canton Center and Hanford. There's quite a bit of traffic that rolls, goes through there.
Because of the daycare?
I, you know, I'm a professional. I work in, you know, I work outside the area, so I commute quite a bit. So, I'm not necessarily home on a daily basis.
Yeah, so we're not aware of an impact necessarily from the daycare as opposed to it's just a heavily, a more heavily traveled road?
Well.
We don't know.
I can't say there is or isn't, because I don't observe it, because I'm, when I'm commuting, I'm commuting outside of that. Now, you're talking, you know, how can you afford, how can you make that statement if now you're gonna double the occupancy to 12?
Okay.
So, again.
Chairman?
Yes.
Did you say? Do you see an, do you see an impact from the traffic or her clientele right now as she maintains it?
Again, based on her operating hours, those are outside my commute, my commute time, and I commute out of Canton. I don't work inside of Canton.
Can I ask a question of the applicant, Mr. Chairman?
Sure, go ahead.
Ms. Frankie, are you still there?
Yeah, I will, I will allow her to talk here. Ms. Frankie, you're up.
Yes.
Do you have six children there on your premises now on a regular basis?
I have about five, and the teachers drop off between 6:30 and 7:00, 7:30. There's no activity until about 2:15 to 3 o'clock when the school system lets out.
And are you doing this, do you know that you'll be getting additional children? Or are you doing this in anticipation of?
Well, currently, I have someone who is due in September, and that would put me over. So, either, like, again, my intention is to take one or two more, but I either have a choice of family or group. So, if I don't get it, then I will have to turn the family away come the fall.
And did you say that there is a different license for a number between six and 12 from the state or not?
No, you get either a family, one to six, or a group. Then it would be like one to 12. However, I believe the state takes into account the square footage of your home. So, even though you may be granted a group home license up to 12, you may only get licensed for up to seven, eight, or nine, depending on the square footage of your home.
And you said most of your outdoor activity takes place on your deck?
Correct. I mean, we're not outside much, because the kids nap all afternoon, and by the time they're getting up, the teachers, the school system is out. So, they're picking up, you know, either as they're waking up or very shortly after.
What is the age range of the children you're watching?
Anywhere from three months to four or five years old.
So, are they, are most parents at the five-year-old mark enrolling their children in kindergarten and such, that you're not watching them anymore at that point?
Correct. And they've started putting their kids in preschool here in Canton, anywhere from two to three, four days a week.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, yep. Any other comments from the audience?
One last. One, one, one last statement, if I may, and then I'll So, all I, all I would ask is, as you're considering this and my major concern is the value, obviously the value of my property. If you had two houses of equal, equal value and equal worth, and you had the choice between which one you were going to purchase, would you purchase the one next to a daycare center? Or would you purchase one in a neighborhood solely of single family homes? That's all I ask you to consider, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, any other comments, Patrick?
I don't see anybody else in the audience with their hand raised.
All right. Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing? All right, we've got a motion to close the public hearing by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Weber. Commissioner Zubor, would you call the vote on that, please?
Sure, Commissioner Charia.
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger.
Yes.
Commissioner Engel. Commissioner Ocon, I'm sorry, Commissioner Foster, he skipped you twice.
Yes.
Commissioner Ocon.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
Commissioners Uber, yes, and Chairman Green.
Yes, oh, did you, we also have Commissioner Singh with us.
Oh, I'm sorry, he's back, right, I'm, Commissioner Singh, okay. I have you crossed out, because you weren't, you weren't here at the beginning, so I've got
Okay, all right, all right, so let's go to the commission. Craig, do you have anything on this, any concerns, comments?
So, she has it for six people right now, she wants to go from six to twelve, right?
Correct.
Is that what we're discussing, whether she can go from six to twelve?
That is the gist of tonight's discussion.
It, it sounded to me like she's saying she's probably not going to go to twelve, but she could, yeah.
But that's what the state, that's what the state's designation would allow her to have, so I think we have to think, think in terms of maximums.
Right, and she's been having six for how many years?
I think in her letter, she said it's been quite a number of years.
Well, she says she's lived there twenty-seven years, I don't know that she says how many years she's done this.
Yeah, that's what I, I just would, I was just curious as to how long she's been running it currently. And appears it's been no problems from, nobody's raised any issues, that there's been an issue.
It says seven years she's been running it.
It appears that there's been no complaints by the residents or the, or anybody else for the past seven years that she's been operating it, so I realize she says she may not go to twelve, but it's either six or twelve, one or the other, so I, I guess I don't have a big problem with it, because I don't think that she wants to go to twelve, because she probably physically can't do twelve, so I would be in support of the increase, because she's already been operating for seven years with no issues. And she appears to just want to accommodate faculty and staff of the you know, of her constituents, I guess is the best way to put it for me, so I would be in support.
You should support, okay, so to that point, she did state in her, in the application that there, the, that closest group home is run by someone who is, is not operating to the maximum, but is probably going to retire at some time in, in the near future, so that might put more emphasis on her getting to that twelve maximum, that's why we need to think in terms of
To that point, Mr. Chairman, that, that, if, if we're talking about the, the home at sixty-seven hundred Stirbridge. If you look at that, that home, it's, there, there is much bigger lots there, there's that yard, those yards are fenced. And all that sort of thing, so you, you almost have to think of it in those terms. It's, you know, I don't know that we're comparing apples to apples, if we're looking at that way, if that lady retires and, you know, that, those, those clients come to her, or what, what the case may be, I think to your point. We have, do have to consider this in terms of maximums.
Right, exactly, yep. So, the, the other concern I had was answered by, by her, which she stated that she's been in no violation of any of the homeowners association bylaws like fencing and stuff like that, so we're not, our decision tonight is not, you know, helping or hurting that aspect. It's just a matter of whether or not we deem that a, a jump from six to twelve is going to impact, let's say, traffic wise. I, I'm going to assume that, you know, everything else would be copacetic, the way she's been running things, because she's been doing it for so long. So, really, it kind of gets simplified down to, you know, does twelve make a difference than six in terms of how she operates this and the families that come to her and come and go and you know, all of those aspects. Anybody else have any comments on that? Commissioner Foster, did you have a comment? I thought you, I thought, sorry, you're hand raised.
No, I think I was just pushing my, my glasses up, I mean, the only thing that I the only thing that I would say is that, um, you know, she's been operating, hasn't had any issues. I don't think she will go to twelve, because she said a number of times that it depends on the square footage of your home, and the state can limit you based on, on the square footage of your home. And so I have no concerns with moving this forward.
Okay. Any other thoughts from the Commissioner Weber?
I, I generally don't have a concern, I mean, like, like like Craig said, she's been operating for a number of years without, without a problem, I guess my biggest concern is that she doesn't have a fenced yard, and I would be, I as a, as a parent and such, I, that, that concerns me a little bit, but that's but if she's been operating this long without it, and she has a means to do it, I, it probably becomes a bigger problem if she does go up to twelve twelve children, but I don't think that'll be an issue. I, I don't really think either, that, and this is just my opinion, that this would, this use would have a, a negative, a demonstrative negative effect on surrounding property values. I don't, I don't think these types of uses typically, the ones that I've seen are ones that are really noticeable in the community and the neighborhood, you know, traffic is usually not a big, a big issue, and as long as the homeowner keeps the property up, I don't, I don't see that it I don't see that it'll, it will have a, a, a negative effect on the surrounding property values.
Okay, Commissioner Ocon, anything? No?
I do not, thank you.
Commissioner Charia?
Uh, yes, I have a couple of concerns and questions. So one is from the standpoint of the, the neighbor, and his, his concern was that the property value might be affected if there is a family, if there's, there's a childcare or family care kind of a unit, but that's existing, it's already been there for seven years, so you know, we can't take that away, so the property is already factored that particular concern. Whether the property value is going to be affected when we change from family to group is a question that I ask, you know, I, I don't think that's going to happen, because a daycare is a daycare, so, and there's an existing daycare, so the property values are not going to be affected by this particular application. The second concern that I had was the fifteen hundred square feet restriction or limitation. I'm not sure whether it's for safety reasons, or whether it's for protecting an existing group home, a group daycare, it's a business, you know, it's whether, for whether it's for protection of that business from competition, or whether it is related to the safety of the kids. If it's safety of the kids, then you know, I would leave the other way, so I'm, I'm struggling between these two points, and if Patrick could throw some light on the fifteen hundred square foot, you know, restriction and the, the reasoning behind that, it would kind of help.
Yeah, I think I think what I would, what I would, in, in the absence of the, the planning act, or the, the Michigan zoning act really specifying the reason why, if, if I look at the act itself, I can, I can pull out a, a few things that I think is, is the intent. The first is that one of the standards of the zoning act is that the visible characteristics of the neighborhood are not negatively impacted. And so I think what, what it's looking at is that if you have three different group daycares on one block, and you've got over thirty kids that are being cared for on the block, you've got your peak hours a day. That could visibly alter the characteristics of the neighborhood, and just how busy it is. And in terms of traffic and the, the activity and noise during the day. The other item that I look at is under the parking provision in the zoning act in terms of having adequate parking, so if there were three group daycares on, on one block, and if there's, say there's thirty kids, and we don't assume that any of them have siblings, we could see thirty vehicle trips probably within the span of an hour parked on the street and trying to get in and out, and that, and that could, that could cause some traffic backups and go back to the visible alteration of the neighborhood character. So I think that's what it's getting at in terms of some of those secondary effects to, to the use itself. And then the last thing that I, I want to point to, to touch on is that the act does say that the community can administratively modify that separation distance, because not all communities will be the same, so you know, if it was, if it was had the appearance of one block, and there was a collection of them, I think there might be grounds to say you know, there's already, if there's already a lot of traffic or noise activity, if there's been complaints and things like that, but I think it's there so that we can look at each one individually to see really what the proximity is. Are you going to be seeing the same traffic, are you next door to each other, or are you perhaps a different neighborhood or a couple of blocks away?
Patrick, is the fifteen, is the fifteen hundred separation, is that a state mandate, or is that a township ordinance?
That's in the state zoning act, that's fifteen hundred feet.
Okay, okay, so, because the fifteen hundred sounds pretty arbitrary in terms of distancing. Yeah, I I don't think I see any problem moving, you know, moving this from six to twelve, potential of twelve. In that, in that regard, particularly since she has a track record of running it successfully with the unders, the six and under. You know, I, I, my, my personal opinion is, you know, let's, let's go ahead and allow her petition to go through. Anybody have any comments on that? Commissioner Singh, did you have anything to add?
No, I think you're right, I don't see any, any major objection, no objections at all, I mean, I was just checking the property values also within the last couple of years, and I don't see any difference in, in this neighborhood than all the other neighborhoods where property values have been shooting up, it's the same pretty much same thing, if you look at the recent property being sold in January twenty-one and, or before, so I don't see any diminishing property values as one of the residents that have questions, so as long as she's meeting all the state laws and city laws and and all the safety stuff is being met, I'm, I think it should be approved.
Mr. Chairman, I, I assume as part of her licensing requirements from the state that there's inspections by the state, I, I don't know that for a fact, but I'm guessing. Getting back to her, her comment about square footage and number of children. It says a childcare home should not provide less than thirty-five square feet per child of safe, usable, accessible indoor floor space. Not including bathrooms and storage areas. So I, I think you know, I, I think given the state law and the licensing requirements, and that's where I, I'm, you know, I, I just to repeat what I said before, I don't think, I'm comfortable that there's I, I doubt that it's ever going to get to twelve kids, but it's not to say that it can't, but just, the part is going to be a part of the state enforcing their laws.
Sure, Patrick, Patrick, you know, Commissioner Weber brings, brings a valuable point, that's not, not in our purview, the, the, the fact if we approve this right now, she still has to apply to the state to go from a family to a group designation, which means that whatever inspection process or whatever criteria they impose would have to, to, she'd have to comply with, right? It's not, that's not for us to decide in terms of square footage and all that kind of thing.
Uh, that's correct, the items that are in the zoning act are, are fairly limited, which leaves the, the state with the other standards. And before the state goes through with its review, it requires a form from the community for municipal approval, so the zoning official or planning official will have to sign the form saying, yes, you have municipal approval, or if they don't, the form wouldn't be signed, and then that, I, I think that's at the front end of their review, because I don't think the state would want to spend all the time and effort it does on the licensing if they don't have assurance.
I'm not, I'm not saying how, that this, 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 this would go this way, but if we were to approve this tonight, and then she applied, and this, this, the state said no. Would that designation of group family home still be there on this property? Even though, even though the state said no?
Um, I believe it would, unless the state did something with her family daycare home license.
And this designation, the special land use, it would remain with this property at this address until perpetuity?
Typically, a special land use will run with the property, unless there's a clear intent to abandon the special land use.
Can we make a condition on the special land use approval that, that she complies with all state licensing requirements and, and that sort of thing, so that if a license is ever expired, or doesn't renew it, or whatever, that the, the special land use ceases?
I think we can, and if that recommendation is made, I can check with the township attorney prior to final board action to, to make sure that that can be enforceable.
Okay, good to know. All right, anyone else have any questions or concerns, otherwise, maybe we want to make that, if you're going to make a motion, maybe you want to make that as part of a motion.
I would like to make a motion. I move to recommend, oops, I'm looking at the wrong thing. Yeah, I was going to recommend approval of the Home Depot outline. I, I'm not paying attention, I guess, to where my, my scrolling is. I move to recommend approval of the request for special land use for a group childcare home on tax parcel number zero three eight zero seven zero zero, 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 three nine, zero, 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 also known as seven one three eight Foxwoods Drive. Um, including a modification to the separation distance from sixty-seven hundred Stirbridge to allow the current separation distance of approximately twelve hundred and fifty feet. Conditioned on the, the, the the owners holding a, a license to conduct a daycare, is that, does that meet your suggestion?
To conduct a group, a group daycare?
Yes, thank you.
How about maintaining all state licensing requirements for a group day, group home daycare?
I'll accept that. For my resident lawyer.
And is it necessary to put a sunset on this, for example, conditioned on that's what she wants, the, the, the business she wants to run? Or do we just let it, does it sit with that property?
You mean, in other words, as long as, as long as she owns the property, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's basically what I'm saying, is that, that do we want to put any kind of a, a, an end result on this based upon, on her and what she wants to do? You know, because otherwise, when she, let's say that she decides she doesn't want to run the business anymore, and she's going to sell the home. Then, then the home would necessarily fall in the hands, well, no, not necessarily, it could fall in the hands of another group home practitioner, or someone who is buying this home and has, just has that designation, and whether they use it or not, is that what we want? In the community?
I'm personally fine with that, but I'm not sure, to Patrick's point, typically special land uses do run with the land. I just if, if, if the township attorney feels that that's enforceable, then I'm, I'm fine with that.
I think the motion has made it clear that if she's not, doesn't still have the license, which obviously the next person that moves into the
Won't necessarily.
Have the li, the license, so they would not have the land use, I think we're covered that way.
I just, you know, I would, I would be concerned that that might even become a selling feature.
People wanting to run daycares in their homes? Because there's a whole bunch of people wanting to run daycares in their homes.
Yeah, and it makes them land more, more, more even more valuable, right?
I think they'd have to apply for a state license, though. I think the license goes to the person, not the house.
Yeah, right. And I'm, I'm sure that that's part of it, but I guess if somebody were to buy that property with the notion that, hey, I could run, I could run a daycare. It's already got local authority. I just have to go through the state and get my licensing. And we've already, you know, done my diligence as far as that's concerned. I, I don't know that that's really a concern of ours. I, I'm just, I'm throwing it out there. So you're, you're fine with the contingency of her holding the licenses? As part of the motion. Okay, all right. We've got a motion then on the floor by Commissioner Zuber. Do we have support?
Or?
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioners Zuber and support by, I believe it was Commissioner Weber. Commissioners Zuber, would you call the vote on that, please?
Sure. Commissioner Charia?
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster? Commissioner Okon?
Yes.
Commissioner Singh?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioners Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green?
Yes. Okay, so this goes to the trustees, probably what, within the month, Patrick?
Yeah, probably the, the end of the month. Probably looking at May twenty fifth is the next available board meeting.
Okay, all right. If Ms. Frankie is still on, on the Zoom call, I wish her luck with that. Wish her success. Okay, our next agenda item is lifetime dental. I'm sorry, is the Home Depot outlet?
Well, jumping ahead.
Yeah, which, which Commissioners Zuber wanted to get, go ahead and start the motion for. We're, we're considering a site plan approval. This property is located south of Ford Road and east of Lots Road. Patrick, could you give us more detail?
Sure. This, this proposal was before the Planning Commission for Special Land Use Review last fall. And the special land use was approved by the Township Board on October thirteenth, twenty twenty. And the special land uses were a, a collection of different commercial uses in the Corporate Park Overlay District. Although the site is zone C three, it's in the Corporate Park Overlay District, which virtually requires almost every use in the district that's permitted is done so by special land use. And so the, the applicants obtained special land use approval for a number of commercial uses. I won't list them all, but they're, they're there in our report. And one of the uses in particular was a restaurant on the east side of the building with a pickup window. During the special land use review, the special land use plan at that time included two buildings and only one of them was approved for a pickup window. And so at that time, the applicant wasn't sure if they would go with two buildings or one. But ultimately, they had decided on one and pursued site plan review for that, that building. The, the site is called the Home Depot Outlet because it originated as a land division from the Home Depot located farther south. Back on March sixth of twenty seventeen, so we're just over four years ago, the Planning Commission had approved a request from Home Depot to reduce the number of parking spaces from seven hundred three to five hundred and fourteen. And that modification was approved. By approving that modification, that allowed the applicants to pursue a land division for this outlot. And then subsequently, special land use and site plan review. So that's the, those are some of the origins of how it became the, the Home Depot. In going through some of the site plan standards for the architecture of the building, the building has more than fifty percent of the brick required in the zoning ordinance. And the building elevations show a parapet for the screening of rooftop mechanical equipment. For the schedule regulations, the the site shows compliance with the Corporate Park Overlay District and underlying C three district for height and setbacks. For the access management, there are no new curb cuts onto Ford Road. And the site is accessed by existing drives from the west and south. So all of the existing access management for the site is already in place. For the, for the parking and loading, they are, they're seeking approval of more parking spaces that are allowed by the zoning ordinance. Based on the type of building it is, it's classified as a shopping center, which limits the number of spaces to a maximum of forty seven because of the ratio of one space per two hundred and fifty square feet. The applicant is proposing to, is seeking approval for eighty two spaces, which is twenty five more than the maximum. And one of the reasons is that many of the uses at this site are unknown at this time. And if the building were to be occupied mostly by a restaurant, then the parking demands go way up. Where a shopping center requires one space per two hundred and fifty square feet, a restaurant is one space per sixty five square feet of usable floor area. So in some of these parking lots, sometimes the demand could jump depending on the nature of the use. So that's the, the reason why they're proposing as many spaces as they are. The zoning ordinance allows for the Planning Commission to increase the maximum number of parking spaces. So that's a administrative, that's administrative modification the Planning Commission is able to make. Finally, on the parking, the Corporate Park Overlay District does not allow parking in the front yard, but it does allow the Planning Commission to modify that requirement. And we recommend approval of modifying the requirement to allow for parking in the front yard. The sheet, C three specifically illustrates that the proposed building would be in line with the adjacent commercial buildings to the west and east. So that, that building line is consistent with the neighbors. And also there are many other uses in the Corporate Park Overlay that have their parking in the front yard. So this one would look a little bit different if it didn't have the same parking in the front yard that all the neighboring uses had. For the landscaping and screening, the site is designed to comply with Article five of the zoning ordinance. There may be some minor modifications due to Corporate Park Overlay District requirements, but they're, they're relatively minor that we may, we may address administratively at a later time. And then finally, the, the lighting and the dumpster enclosure are designed to comply with the zoning ordinance. And there's also a monument sign that's illustrated on the plans that's designed to comply. The signs are approved by the building divisions, so that won't be officially approved until they've been a permit pulled and approved, but it's on the sign, it's on the plans for illustrative purposes. Therefore, our recommendation is for approval of the Home Depot Outlet, including a modification to allow eighty two parking spaces and parking in the front yard as shown on the plans, subject to any necessary revisions to the landscape plan to comply with the zoning ordinance. That concludes our review and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Is the project applicant or representative in the audience tonight?
Yes, we have two representatives. Well, we have one, one that, one I know of, Brian Aman. There's also a gentleman by the name of Bo Wen. I think he's one of the applicants, but I'll allow Brian to talk and then he can let me know if, if Bo is on the team. There's also Eric Williams from Stonefield, so I'll allow Brian and Eric to talk. And if they want to promote Bo, we can do that as well.
Okay.
Brian and Eric here up, if you could, on meeting shelves.
Thank you. Thank you, Pat. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Great. It's great to see some of you and I miss seeing you in person, but hopefully we'll, we'll get over that soon. But yes, and Patrick, you're right. It's myself, Bo Wen, and then Eric Williams. Bo is the architect, Eric is the engineer. And I just want to briefly thank you for the indulgence of hanging on with us as long as Patrick explained. I've been working with this project over a number of years to try to work, you know, this is one of those instances where Home Depot have one of those sea, is that sea of asphalt parking lots? And, and we had some of those in Canton, and so we've been working to try to repurpose some of that. And I think as he's described the proposal to you tonight, we've tried to make sure it's right along the lines of what is adjacent to it and it will be a great addition to the township. He also explained very well that, that because of the, the unknowns about the uses and as you all are dealing with on a regular basis because of COVID, even our existing known users are having such a challenge as to parking, as to how to get meals and things to people and whatever. So we really appreciate the, the assistance and the wisdom shown in allowing us to move forward with this plan, which gives us the greatest flexibility to address what we're going to run into as we go. And so with that, we're really prepared to answer any questions you might have. Bo is on the architecture and Eric's on the engineering. Otherwise, we're, we won't take a lot of your time. I know you've had a lot on your, on your plate already tonight, so.
All right. Thank you very much for being here tonight and hanging on for any questions we might ask. I'm going to go right to the commission. Commissioner Charia, any questions or concerns?
No, I have no questions.
No? Commissioners Zuber?
I don't have any questions or concerns.
Commissioner Weber?
My only question is, we're not trying to sneak Chick-fil-A in here, are we?
No, on a side, on a side note, Chick-fil-A wanted me to represent them in, in another location. I refused to do it because I just didn't think it was a good thing for the township. So no, this is not a drive-through window. This is a carryout window and, and as we, we're doing the special use process, so, yeah.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Engel?
All set. Thank you.
Commissioner Foster?
I am good. I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Okon?
I am good. Thank you.
Commissioner Egenberger?
Uh, yeah, I had a couple of questions. I'm feeling a little bit like an outlaw with that myself. So I'm looking at the sign and showing where the cars come around and apparently they're just picking up food and I, I don't know what the difference is, but I see them get to the stop sign and it looks as though they could make a right turn, which looks like a heck of a right turn. In fact, it looks like a complete U-turn. Is that something that would be okay? Because that doesn't feel very safe.
Could, could you explain that again, what your, what your concern is?
Yeah, which sheet are you looking at?
Um, let me see if it shows a number on it.
Are you referring to the carryout lane?
Yeah, the carryout lane.
Site plan's listed as C four.
Page.
I think that's.
Oh, yeah, with the cars drawn on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And you come to the stop sign. And yes, thank you, Patrick. And then it looks as though they could make a right turn, which then, you know, turns into a U-turn.
That is.
Oh, I see. As opposed to just keep going counterclockwise out of the property.
Right, right. And, and again, you know, them, I mean, this happens a lot of times when you're driving through these sort of parking lots. I know that when, when I see somebody coming out of a pickup window and I'm scooting across, sometimes you do have to worry, but you can see these people would be coming out. Then they're running, going right into that traffic. I guess I'm just wondering, why aren't we just having to? I, I guess I'm trying to understand the, the traffic.
Eric, would you please address the turning radius there? And as it relates to her concern is that they're going to come up here and try to do a button hook right. So it looks like a U-turn more than, you know, a, a, and a less safe traffic maneuver, obviously. But can you address the turning radius issue there and whether we ought to be considering trying to direct that traffic in one way or another?
Yeah, absolutely. I, I think, you know, from a multi-tenant strip center drive-through layout, this is a fairly typical layout from what we would see. You know, throughout, I don't want to necessarily say Canton, but throughout Michigan. And, you know, the important piece to keep in mind is that the drive-through, that the people exiting the drive-through will be forced to stop prior to making that movement. So they'll be able to check, you know, is there cars coming left? Is there cars coming from the right? And they can make the correct decision based on, you know, availability. In terms of the one hundred and eighty degree, excuse me, one hundred and eighty degree turn, I, I would tend to agree that may be a challenging maneuver. And if that's something that the commission would like us to look into, I think there is some availability on the west side of the property to maybe widen that landscape island. Or we could do something as simple as adding a, a no right turn sign and force everybody towards the exit on the northwest corner. That would then allow them to access Ford Road. So I, I think there's really two options there and neither would be detrimental to the site.
Yeah, I think I'd love to see some other options. It just doesn't look particularly safe.
I, I think we could, and, and thank you, Commissioner. I, it may be that we can just physically change it so that we, we force a left turn out of there by the way we designed the exit of that. And because obviously, you know, I, I'm fortunate, I would like to say people behave, they listen to signs, but you know, I'm, I'm as guilty as anybody as I finally got my bag of food and whatever, and I can't wait to get it home, right? So, so we're we're at this point, but, but I think, so we may want to create a physical solution to that to just make sure the certainty of movement is going in that direction.
That might be a great work with staff type of scenario to, to tweak that. You know, that physically tweak that.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know. It looks like you might have to do away with part of that patio in order to make that look more like, yeah, you, you gotta turn left here.
It actually, so it actually requires structure on the right side to, to, to take away the right-hand opportunity. The left would be fine. So, yeah.
Oh, I see what you're saying. You would, okay, all right.
Kind of create.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments, Commissioner Egenberger?
No, thank you. That was it.
Commissioner Singh? Any comments?
No comments.
Uh, let's see, did I call on Commissioner Weber? I don't have everybody in front of me because I have the the drawing in front of me now, so I don't get to see everybody when you do that.
You're, you already called on me.
I called on you. Commissioner Okon, did I call on you?
Yep, I'm good. Thank you.
You're good. Okay. And Commissioner Charia? Am I calling you? Did I call on everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Well, then it's my turn. Okay. Yeah, yeah. Welcome aboard, Commissioner, Mr. Aman. The only concern I have, and I'm hoping our resident architect will join with me in this. On the elevations, I would like to see, because I, I see some, some great horizontal delineation going on with the brickwork. But to me, it looks like, especially on the rear and maybe a little bit on the sides, it looks like it needs some, some vertical delineation, like maybe some pilasters or something that you know, that gets away from just the, the lines going to the sides. Is there a possibility that architecturally that can be treated a little, little with more pizzazz? And then the other concern I have there, which could be treated later, that looks like a zoning or a yeah, zoning appeals situation signage. I'd like to see the businesses a, actually have a small version of their signage on the south side of the building. You know, we, we seem to neglect that. I want our businesses to be successful. And if you're going to Home Depot and you're coming out of Home Depot, you should be able to see what those businesses are. It's just a, a thing that I have about Canton's businesses. We need to make them exposed without going overboard on signage. I want to see them, you know, maximize their presence.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You're, you and I are of equal spirit and that nature of a three sixty presence on that, on the signage issue. Bo Wen, can you address the desire for some more vertical interest in the, in the elevation, please?
Absolutely. We can definitely break that up and make those rear corners more tower elements like the front and break up some of the horizontal striping in the back.
That's what I wanted to hear. Okay, so that would be a work with staff type of, type of scenario. I, I don't, I don't mean to micromanage and design the building and stuff like that. Thank you very much for making the building high enough, the parapet's high enough to cover any of the mechanical units. You know, that's always an appreciated appearance factor. That's really all I have. I'm, I'm, you know, I'm welcoming the businesses to Canton. I know a lot of people say that, you know, Canton is growing too big, but I, I, I think, hey, we can, I probably support it, you know, and it is what it is in terms of, you know, fast foods and And it is what it is in terms of, you know, fast foods and drive-throughs and stuff like that. Although, if you have any influence on Chick-fil-A, mention Michigan Avenue. Anyway, enough said on that.
Mr. Chairman, I'll tell you, I have two points in that. First off, I think, I can't tell you how many people I run into Canton who think anything east of the freeway is not Canton anyway. So it's, you know, I explained, no, it's not West Line, that's Canton. So it is part of our community. And then as to Chick-fil-A, when I told them I wouldn't help them on Ford Road, they quit talking to me. So anyway.
I don't know what the magic is on Ford Road, but it's there. It's definitely there. Okay. So with that said, anybody have anything they want to add or make a motion or whatever you want to do? Let's hear from somebody. Don't everybody speak at once?
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend approval of the Home Depot Outlet Site Plan on Tax Parcel 049-99-0001-719, including a modification to allow 82 parking spaces and parking in the front yard as shown on the plans, subject to any necessary revisions to the landscape plan to comply with the zoning ordinance.
Support.
All right, we've got a motion on the floor by Commissioners Uber and support by Commissioner Foster. One other point that I would like to bring up, Mr. Aiman, on those sides where we were talking about the delineation, I don't see at the back, you know, I obviously don't have any lighting charts or anything in front of me. I don't see anything at the back in terms of, let's say, security lighting or just a little bit of lighting that makes that pleasant at night. Is there some stipulation there, like on the front?
There is. There is actually, it just probably doesn't show because of the, but we meet the photometric requirements of being appropriately lighted, but not overlighted. So, yeah, it's just not showing up in terms of what you're looking at.
Okay. All right. That said, Commissioner Zuber, would you call the vote on this, please?
Yeah, but I just want to point out on the back elevation, the back elevation, there's a note that says sign per sign vendor and it's pointing to the roof ladder. But anyway, I've never done anything like that on any of my drawings, of course.
It's a new age sign, you know.
That's a ladder company.
That means they have to use the ladder to go and put the sign up there.
That's their brand image.
Okay, so calling the roll. Commissioner Charia?
Yes.
Commissioner Eganberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Okan?
Yes.
Commissioner Singh?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green?
Yes. Okay, so this recommendation goes to the trustees for meetings yet this month or early next month?
Probably by the end of the month, probably, let me make sure I'm talking on turn here. Yeah, it looks like May 25th is the next available meeting. I think by then, any modifications to the plans should be done. I don't think there's going to be much to do to.
Okay, awesome.
Mr. Chairman and planning commission, thank you so much for your time. And I would say my only comment is, Patrick, we have to get your better ambient lighting compared to what I see in the rest of the people on this screen here. We got, you know, it's just come on.
Went out on him at one point.
Yeah, well, the light was off, but someone was home, so.
All right, moving right along, our next agenda item is the Lifetime Dental Parking Lot Modifications, where we're considering a site plan modification for a property which is located west of Canton Center Road between Cherry Hill and Salts. Patrick, could you give us more detail?
Yes, Lifetime Dental is proposing to expand the parking lot from 21 spaces to 28 spaces based on the parking demands of the patients and the employees. The proposed expansion is on the east and south sides of the parking lot with a proposed landscape berm remaining in those areas. As a result, some of that landscaping will be replaced. The proposed connection to the site to the north, Roses, will be maintained on the northeast corner on Lifetime Dental side, although there's not a current connection on Roses side. And there's nothing we can really do to force that connection unless Roses Restaurant came in for something, at which time we can, we would be able to work through that. The site is at the northwest corner of Canton Center and Cherry Hill. It's in the 01 Office District. And the original site plan was approved in 2004 for a medical use at the current site. And Lifetime Dental is the current user. There's no change in use proposed. And the applicant, according to the applicant, Lifetime Dental leases spaces to the west in Roses Parking Lot, directly west of Lifetime Dental. And so the applicant wants to increase the number of spaces to allow more of those cars to park on Lifetime Dental's lot. Based on the standards of the zoning ordinance for medical office, the required number of parking spaces is one per 200 square feet. So based on the floor area of the building, 19 spaces are required, up to a maximum of 21 spaces. Just like with Home Depot Outlet, the applicant is proposing to increase the number of maximum spaces and requests a modification from that requirement from the planning commission. And for some of the similar reasons, although in this case the use is known and the demand is higher. So based on some of the parking levels to the Roses Lot to the west, the applicant has been able to demonstrate that there is a demand for these additional parking spaces. So based on our review of several aerial photographs taken at various times from 2015 to 2021, as well as times when we've observed it from the road, we believe that the proposed 28 spaces are sufficient for Lifetime Dental's current and future use. And we would recommend that that modification be approved. The next item in our review letter is the landscaping. There are landscaping changes shown on sheet LP1, which are mostly compliant with Article 5 of the zoning ordinance. We're currently working with the applicant to revise some of the calculations to comply with the requirements for front yard berm landscaping, general landscaping, parking lot landscaping, and foundational landscaping. There is sufficient area on the site to plant the required number of trees and shrubs. It's just a matter of getting those calculations right and getting the plan to show the required landscaping. So compliance there is attainable. There are two landscaping requirements where the applicant is requesting a modification. The first is the zoning ordinance requires a berm to be 26 feet wide if a front yard setback is 166 feet or greater. If it's less than 166 feet, then the berm can be narrowed to 20 feet wide. The current setback from Canton Center Road to the Lifetime Dental Building is 166.87 feet. Therefore, the berm width requirement is 26 feet. The applicant is proposing a berm width of 20 feet. Because the setback is very close to being under 166 feet, we would recommend modifying that required berm to be, to go from 26 feet to 20 feet. The other modification that the applicant is proposing for the landscaping is the minimum width of a parking lot landscape area. Right now, the ordinance requires a parking lot landscape area to be 12 feet wide. There's a small landscape area in the southwest corner of the parking lot where cars come in from the driveway and then turn into the lot. The applicant proposes to narrow that to about five to six feet wide to allow for additional parking area. The other parking lot landscape widths will comply with the ordinance. So if that narrowing is acceptable to the planning commission, we would recommend approval of that as well. The last item that we have in our review letter is the lighting. There are two existing parking lot lights that are proposed to be relocated and two new decorative lights at the proposed entrance with one on each side. The lighting photometric plan will have to be updated to ensure compliance with the illumination standards of the zoning ordinance based on the relocation of those light fixtures. So that's something that we recommend that they take care of administratively, along with some of the landscaping. Therefore, our recommendation is approval of the site plan for Lifetime Dental, including zoning ordinance modifications pursuant to Section 4.01 C6 for 28 parking spaces, Section 5.03 A1 for a 20-foot wide berm on the east side of the site, and Section 5.02C for a narrower parking lot landscape area in the southwest corner of the parking lot, subject to additional information required to demonstrate compliance with the landscaping and lighting requirements of the zoning ordinance. That concludes our report and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Is the project sponsor or owner representative available?
Yes, it looks like Dr. David Comm is in the audience with his hand raised, so I'll allow him to talk. Dr. Comm, you're up. If you could take yourself off of mute.
Welcome.
Hello.
Hello.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Hi.
Hello. Did you have anything that you'd like to add to what Patrick has stated about your project?
No, Patrick's been a great help. We're just trying to expand some parking spaces to fulfill the demand of our patients and our staff.
Okay. Let's go then to the commission. If you guys, if your squares don't hop around, I'll try to call you in some sort of semblance of order. Commissioner Zuber?
If no issue with this.
Commissioner Weber?
I'm fine with it. Thank you.
Commissioner Engel?
I'm fine too. Thank you.
Commissioner Okan?
Good, thank you.
Commissioner Eganberger?
I'm fine also. Thank you.
Commissioner Charia?
I'm fine. Thank you.
Commissioner Singh?
I'm fine too. Thank you.
Commissioner Foster?
No questions. Thank you.
Well, that was easy enough. The, Patrick, it appears as though the the change on the Canton Center side is, according to the map or according to what we're looking at the overhead, it looks like it makes it pretty much parallel with what goes on, you know, in terms of parking at Roses. So I see no problem with this. Any other comments from anyone? Nothing? Okay, do I hear a motion?
I can make a motion. I move to approve the site plan. I feel like I'm making all the motions, but am I just?
You're just quicker on the button.
I guess. I move to approve the site, the site plan, the site plan, site plan. I moved to approve this plan for Lifetime Dental on Tax Parcel number 064-99-0015-701, including zoning ordinance modifications pursuant to Section 4.01 C6 for 28 parking spaces, Section 5.03 A1 for 20-foot wide berm on the east side of the site, and Section 5.02C for narrower parking, narrower parking lot landscaping area in the southwest corner of parking lot, subject to additional information required to demonstrate compliance with the landscaping and lighting requirements of the zoning ordinance, as noted by the community planner.
Support.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zuber and support by, I believe, it's Commissioner Singh. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, saying none. Commissioner Zuber, would you call the vote, please?
Sure. Commissioner Charia?
Yes.
Commissioner Eganberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Okan?
Yes.
Excuse me. Commissioner Singh?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green?
Yes. So this recommendation then goes to the trustees, assuming that this will be done probably within the month, Patrick?
I think because it's a developer-instigated revision to an approved site plan, this is under the purview of the planning commission. The plan would be approved and.
They can move even faster.
Yes.
All right, awesome, awesome.
Actually, we felt so powerful tonight.
Yeah, how about that? All right, Mr. Cam, good luck with that change to your site. I hope it works out for you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Okay, our final agenda item of the night is TNT fireworks, kaboom. Where we're considering a seasonal sales permit approval for property which is located north of Ford Road and east of Lots Road. Patrick, could you give us more detail?
Sure. The planning commission has seen TNT fireworks application in the past. But in years prior, it has been at the Meyer Parking Lot, with Meyer undergoing its own renovations as well as the construction ongoing for the Culvers Restaurant. There's not room in the parking lot of Meyer this year for TNT fireworks. So they are proposing to relocate into the Sam's Club Parking Lot as illustrated on the plan submitted. They're proposing a 20-foot by 60-foot tent. And they're on the southern part of the parking lot between the building and Ford Road. And the requested permit is from June 21st through July 10th. Their proposal meets the standards of the zoning ordinance regarding seasonal sales and firework sales. And their operations are very similar to what they proposed in years past. So I won't go through and repeat any of the items in our right up there, but I'll be happy to address them if there's any follow-up questions about them. Because the standards are met, our recommendation is approval, subject to the issuance of the tenant sign permits from the Building Services Division.
All right, thank you very much, Patrick. As the project sponsor here?
Yeah, Mr. Chuck Fries is in the audience. Mr. Fries, you're able to talk, so if you could unmute yourself.
Welcome.
Yeah, glad to be here this evening and hope if you have any other questions, I'm here to answer those. Patrick did a good job. And as he said, it's basically a similar setup, just moving down the street a little bit this year for construction. And maybe in the future, potentially doing two spots in the township, but for this year, one step at a time. And it is a slightly larger tent, which is also noted in the application, just to provide a little bit more flexibility for the consumer within the tent to move around and shop, given the pandemic and such as well, so.
Oh, okay, so more space and distancing considerations?
Correct.
Okay, but I don't know how close you want to get to things that go exploding in the darkness anyway. So just a little joke there. Anyone from the commission have anything you want to say? We're just going to open the floor because we've done this before. We've done it many times. And we're just dealing with a new location is all, in a larger tent. Right, and they're experienced in what they do. I do have one question in terms of the loss of parking spaces with the larger tent. That has already been considered, Patrick, in terms of this, for that short period of time, Sam's Club is going to be without, you know, a certain number of parking spots for their regular business, right?
Yeah, that's correct. And I think that the general standard is that it can't, here it is. The temporary parking space reduction can't be more than 10% of the required parking spaces. And so the proposed spaces occupied will be far less than 10%.
Okay, all right. I don't have any concerns, other than I would hope that you don't sell any fireworks to my neighbors. That's another joke, by the way. My dogs would appreciate it. Come on, people, liven up. Any questions or concerns for the project sponsor?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. This is my personal curiosity as opposed to anything with what our actual job is. With regard to when you guys are closed, I see you have overnight security. I've always wondered how operations like this one, how you guys prevent people from getting in the tent and stealing stuff at night. What's, what level of security do you have?
Yeah, no, great question. Our typical format and how we run our operations, and that's over 80 locations in the state of Michigan, is that someone actually is physically there at night. Just like you said, we can put sidewalls and make it look enclosed, but people could potentially. but people could potentially try to sneak around and such. But yes, there is someone that actually stays there with the product, um, kind of babysits it, is what we refer to it almost, that they're right on the outside of the tent in their vehicle or just slightly inside the tent to keep an eye on things and make sure nobody's snooping around. Another benefit to be in the larger box store parking lot too, with other security and cameras and such as well.
The state, does the state uh, have any kind of mandates on such things in terms of, but you know, you, you are housing quite a bit of explosives there? So there's a public risk at hand. I, I would think the state would require uh, a twenty-four-seven uh, surveillance scen- scenario.
Correct, yes. If, if the items are staying in the tent, that is true, that someone is to occupy uh, surveillance, the product. Uh, there are other companies that lock everything up each night. But again, with the amount of product too, that becomes a little cumbersome as a daily task to re-merchandise everything to the level, I agree.
Do you get, do you give the security guy like a cooler full of coffee or something to stay away?
Well, it, it's kind of uh, up to the, the people that we would consign the items to, to be responsible for those items during the duration of the time for it to.
Much like Chairman Green, I was trying to in- inject a little bit of humor.
Yeah, but yeah, there's some coffee consumed. Now we're not as close to Wendy's and Tim Hortons as before, but uh, that's true.
Okay, anyone else have any, any concerns? Or do I hear a motion coming?
I would love to make a motion, although I am really curious how much your general liability insurance costs, but you don't have to answer that.
Yeah.
Um, I move to approve one thirty-day seasonal sales permit for the TNT Fireworks Company, parcel number zero four eight nine nine dash zero zero two two dash seven zero seven, commencing on June twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, as shown on the plans, subject to obtaining appropriate permits from the Building Services Division for erection of the tent and compliance with all sign regulations.
All right, we've got a motion uh, by Commissioners Uber and support by Commissioner Charia. Uh, Commissioners Uber, would you call the vote on that, please?
Sure. Commissioner Charia.
Yes.
Commissioner Egan Burger.
Yes.
Commissioner Engel.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Okon.
Yes.
Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
Commissioners Uber, yes, and Chairman Green.
That's a yes for me as well. Uh, Patrick, uh, this doesn't, does this one have to go to the trustees? Or is this another one in, in our purview?
Uh, that's another one in the planning commission's purview.
Okay, well, good, good luck, Mister Fries. Uh, you know, and um, again, you know, try not to sell anything to my, my neighbors.
All right, thanks again, board. Appreciate it.
All right. All right, so we have a, a couple of items to attend to before we adjourn. Um, we need to send a couple of things to staff. Uh, JS Three Investments LLC uh, wants to uh, do some rezoning. And then Anderson, Paul, and Rita, uh, we're going to also look at zoning information there. Do I hear a motion to send that to staff?
Oh, you can have it.
Wait a minute, who said that? Who, who is that?
Weber.
All right, okay. Do we have a support on that?
Support.
All right, so we've got a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioners Uber. Commissioners Uber, would you call the vote on that, please?
Sure. Commissioner Charia.
Yes.
Commissioner Egan Burger.
Yes.
Commissioner Engel.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Okon.
Yes.
Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioners Uber, yes, and Chairman Green.
That's a yes for me as well. And also, we are going to set a public hearing uh, for two items. Uh, JS Three Investments LLC and Residence Inn and Hilton Garden Inn. Do I hear a motion to set that public hearing for June seventh?
Support.
Oh, okay, we've got some fresh blood here. We've got a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Foster. Uh, Commissioners Uber, would you call the vote on that, please?
Sure. Commissioner Charia.
Yes.
Commissioner Egan Burger.
Yes.
Commissioner Engel.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Okon.
Yes.
Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
Commissioners Uber, yes, and Chairman Green.
That's a yes for me as well. Okay, anything to add? Anything anybody wants to talk about real quickly? Nothing?
I, I just have one follow-up question. Um, heartbreak, can you let us know what community that you're uh, teleconferencing from? I just need to have noted in the minutes.
Uh, I'm sorry, can you repeat that again?
Yeah, could you let me know what community you're teleconferencing from? Um, are you uh, zooming from Canton?
Yes.
Okay, great, that's all.
You weren't, you weren't here for the role where we got to declare our county and all that. Okay. Forgot about that.
Yeah.
Minor details. Okay, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support. Support.
All right, uh, we're not going to call the vote on this. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, every, have a good night, everybody. Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, thank you all.
Thank you.